President.
Supervisor Flores.
President.
Supervisor Zigamire.
Here.
Supervisor Baines.
President.
Supervisor Stevens.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk, and now Laura Grenadesk, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair Flores, members of the board. Did you have another? Okay. County staff, members of the public, thank you for being here. Welcome to Budget Study Session for Fiscal Year 2526. I know this has been a very long evening, so we will try to make this as concise as possible. So what is being covered today? This is a quick snapshot of what we intend to cover this evening. Leon Link, Assistant County Administrator, retired and new tenant, will be reviewing the fiscal year 2324 unassigned fund balance. I will return to review the budget process, county policies, review of resources and appropriations. Jamie Yang, Deputy County Administrator, will be reviewing requested projects, asset purchases, changes in position requests, and then the areas of concern will be reviewed by all three of us. So Leon will start us off.
Good afternoon, Supervisors, members of the public and staff. So normally in November, we come to the Board with a closeout of the prior fiscal year. Generally, we have some amount of surplus, and because of the implementation of Workday this year, we are a little bit delayed in closing, and although we do know the ending of unassigned fund balance, which is the money that the Board has left over to appropriate in the new year in some manner. So when we built the budget for fiscal year 2425, we assumed that we would have $5 million in rollover fund balance. We actually ended up with $14.4 million. We're usually not that far off in our projections, so we really had to break down. As you'll recall, last year at this time, when we came to the Board, we had a $12 million-plus deficit. So we immediately put some budget control strategies into place, and that has actually paid off for us. So the difference between what we assumed when the budget was built and what we actually closed the year with comes from five different areas. The first is general revenues, where we saw increases over what was assumed in property taxes, and a substantial increase in interest from our own resources. So that's just because the interest rates were higher. That's generally considered one-time monies. There were public safety fund savings of about $2.7 million. General fund departments tightened their belts. We had savings there in operations of about $2.1 million. The health fund, about $1.5 million. Some of that came from using realignment funds for things that might otherwise, or for health expenditures, but that does relieve the general fund obligation there a little bit. And then finally, savings in the trial court fund, which really is our smallest operating fund. So as we do every year, the CAO's office makes recommendations on what to do with the excess dollars. The first thing that we recommend is that $1.1 million be immediately deposited into our Internal Revenue Code Section 115 Pension Pre-Funding Account with Public Agency Retirement Services, or PARs. That was a commitment that we brought to the Board back when we adopted the budget in 2024. So that's just merely a restoration. We're also recommending that we make increases to our general reserve and our budget stabilization reserve. These are substantial, and they will take us up to the Government Finance Officer Association's recommended levels, and I'll explain that a little bit further in the next slide. We recommend that $1.5 million go into the commitment for future capital projects. This provides us with the seed money to be able to fund general fund, large projects in subsequent years. We get money from the state to convene a collaborative committee to address the problems of dealing with people who are incompetent to stand trial or ISTs. We had an excess. Last year, we received more money from the state than we actually spent, so we need to commit that. And we can use that in subsequent years for programs that actually reduce the cost and the number of people that go into IST placements. And then finally, we're recommending that we set aside $2 million for the potential of a payroll system adjustment. Our Auditor Controller has mentioned for several years that we really have a need to push out the pay date, and by doing that, there's actually a cost to doing it. So we'd like to recommend setting aside $2 million so that we have no idea what it will cost, but at least it gives us some money to be able to contemplate that in the future. So the recommendation to increase the budget stabilization and general reserves is actually above our current policy level, but it is consistent with GFOA's recommendation. So that would take our reserves up to $12.5 million. There are really great reasons for doing this beyond the recommendation. The first is this gives us the money to withstand a disaster or an economic crisis if we saw a major reduction in our federal or state revenues, or even our local revenues. It gives us the elasticity to not have to make rash decisions. We can be contemplative and actually ease into the cuts that we would need to make in order to bring our services back in line with our resources. It also provides us with the ability to achieve a structurally-balanced budget, where the ongoing revenues support the ongoing expenditures, because we won't have to use such conservative estimates. Normally, we estimate revenues low and expenditures high. We can come a little bit closer to what we think the reality will be, which will get us closer to a structurally-balanced budget. This would help us with our credit rating, should we decide to go out and bond, especially if we need to expand facilities. That's the only time we would be rated, is if we were taking out debt. And by the county's debt policy, we only take out debt for major capital projects. We don't ever use debt for ongoing services. So it gives us a better credit rating, which means savings on our interest rates. And then finally, and I think this is maybe the most important point, because it's immediate, is this allows us to prepay our CalPERS unfunded liability payment in one lump sum at the beginning of the year, which saves us about $570,000 in interest paid to CalPERS. So it gives us that cash flow to allow us to do this without going into negative cash. So those are the reasons that we're recommending that. And we're not asking you to vote on that tonight, just generally indicate whether you're in favor of it, and then we'll bring this back as a formal Board action at a later meeting. Are there any questions on that?
Just a couple of questions. First of all, the reserves of the $12 million on the GFO recommendation. I thought we had set a standard as well. Did you mention that? So what was the Sutter County?
We were at $5 million. By policy, we were at $5 million in the general reserve and $5 million in the economic uncertainty reserve, or the budget stabilization reserve. And so this actually takes, because we were building those up over time. And if I can just move aside just a little bit, I really have to commend the Board, because when I started here, we had $1.1 million in reserves. We were well below the GFOA recommendation. The Board, very methodically, over a period of time, encouraged us to continue to build these reserves, and getting here to this level in a five-year period is pretty astounding. And it's done with one-time monies. We haven't taken away from services simply to fund this. So it really is a good, it's a best practice. So that's why we recommend it.
Thank you for clarifying that. And then I had another question. You had mentioned something about the payroll system, system adjustment, $2 million, and pushing a payday. I'm not sure what that means. If you could clarify what pushing a payday means.
So currently, the pay period ends on the first Friday, and then two weeks later is when paychecks are issued. Because we are so complex in our financial accounting structure, and because we have so many kinds of 24/7 operations, or operations that aren't on a regular 8 to 5 Monday through Friday work week, and we have so many people paid out of different cost centers, our payroll is highly, highly complex. And so, you know, by the time people turn in their time cards by Monday morning, there's just so little time to turn around the payroll and be able to pay them timely. And so what the Auditor Controller has suggested, and we think is prudent, is if we were able to push out that pay period, but that means that people's paychecks would be deleted, not deleted, delayed. And by doing that, it becomes an issue that we have to negotiate with the unions. So we don't know what that's going to look like, but we want to put a placeholder in so that if we have some costs associated with that, which ultimately would be paid back as the employees leave service, but we have to have the money to float it. And so that's why we're recommending setting that aside.
Okay, and then what, how long of a delay are we talking about? Do you know that? Or is that hard to determine? Are we talking 30 days?
Oh, no, no, no.
Five days?
Probably about five days.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
We don't know the whole plan yet. We're just trying to make sure that we have it covered down the road, so that we don't have to impact programs by doing it.
Understood. Thank you for clarifying that. Appreciate it.
Okay.
Any other questions from Board members at this point? Okay, thank you.
Okay. So the budget process for 2526 began in December of 2024, when your Board approved the budget calendar for this budget season. Today's Budget Study Session will review the requested budget. On June 10th, we will return to present your Board with the CAO-recommended budget, and two weeks later, we will bring the recommended budget back to you at a normal Board meeting for tentative approval, so that effective July 1, the county business can continue to operate until budget adoption in September. We do have budget hearings on August 19th. Final budget adoption in September must be before October 2nd, and then December 1st is the deadline for the Auditor Controller to submit the adopted budget to the State Controller's Office. And this is your policy, what you were talking about, Chair Flores. Yeah, this is the policy you were questioning. So it's been the policy of this Board to increase the general reserve and commit fund balance for budget stabilization at $500,000 for each one of those reserves each year, until the balance reaches 5% of the general fund appropriations. If the, yeah, if the reserves are fully appropriated, then this will just require a minor adjustment each year to maintain the reserves at the policy level. The appropriation for contingency in the requested budget is at policy level for fiscal year 2526, at $1.2 million. The contributions to the pension pre-funding account and OPEB, Other Post-Employment Benefits Account, were not included in the fiscal year 2425 to help close the budget gap, but as Leon said, we're hoping to use the remaining fund balance from 2324 to fund that. They are included in the request for 2526 as a hedge to pay down that cost for unfunded CalPERS liability. County does expect for funds with zero or minimal general fund support to accumulate reserves for program stabilization and longevity. So Sutter County understood the assignment. We don't spend money that we don't have. Fiscal year 2425 started with a $12 million deficit. Your Board wisely remained fiscally conservative. Departments tightened their budgets that are already tight, along with a few strategies, like the soft hiring freeze, where positions are reviewed by the CAO's office before they go to HR, prioritizing projects, the needs versus the wants, and reducing services to the community. Both the library and the museum reduced hours. There were delays in response times, because service levels had to be aligned with available resources. The target has always been to have a structurally-balanced budget, but what exactly does that mean?
The Chair, if I, thank you, just briefly. So some of that is experienced by citizens as slowdowns in permitting processes, or reductions in certain services that you all may receive complaints about. So I just wanted to be clear, it's not that there aren't any impacts. It's that, right now, as we know, staff in most departments, it's extremely thin, and we're just dealing with it the best we can. We appreciate your patience and the public's patience, but that's what we've been having to do to make sure that we're putting adequate reserves aside. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. Go ahead, Laura.
So structurally-balanced budget means that budgeted revenues support budgeted operating costs without prior year carryover, a fund balance, the use of one-time funds, or borrowing money. Our debt policy states that we don't borrow funds from, don't borrow from other funds to support ongoing costs. A structurally-balanced budget means that at year-end, the amount of revenues received that actually exceed the operations costs are set aside for one-time projects per policy. Having a structurally-balanced budget ensures the sustainability of ongoing operations, but in Sutter County, our operations are not at ideal levels. Sutter County doesn't have everything we need. While we've matched service levels to our available resources, they still fall short with what the community expects and needs, and this gap is made worse by challenges in hiring and keeping quality staff, especially when nearby jurisdictions pay at least 10% more. Local governments are essential in delivering services closest to the people, yet their ability to serve is increasingly threatened by the infringement of unfunded state responsibilities. Local funds meant for community-driven priorities must now cover state-imposed programs. Our county is heavily dependent on federal funding, and any federal cuts will threaten our local programs. The state, also reliant on federal dollars, may redirect away from counties to address disaster recovery, its own legislative priorities. While our Board wisely prevents using local discretionary funds to backfill those losses, we're still mandated to cover certain services. Many of our centralized support operations, like IT, HR, finance, are partly state and federally funded, so reductions can disrupt countywide functions. On top of that, if the stock market continues to underperform, we face rising pension costs that will strain our budget even more. Because we can't predict exact funding losses, only known cuts are included in the 2526 department requests, and it may become necessary to adjust the budget mid-year in response to some of those looming changes. So who do we serve? While I won't read this entire list, we believe it's important to highlight just how extensive the range of services is that we provide to all county residents, regardless of where they live. The unincorporated area list includes services provided to residents in the unincorporated areas of the county. The internal services list represents the centralized operations that support county's core functions. General fund revenues can be broken into two distinct groups: non-department revenues and general fund department-specific revenues, which are the ag fees, county council fees, permitting fees, the local charges of fees for services. Of the non-department-specific revenues, 65% is property tax revenue. And you can see that we have an average growth of 4.45%, but it is expected in 2526 to be half that rate, at 2.02%. Sales tax revenue is projected at 9.5% of the non-department revenues. In fiscal year 2526, the sales tax growth is relatively flat, as you can see on the graph, with projected growth of 2%. This is just one more reason fulfillment centers are a key goal for the Sutter Point development, to secure ongoing local tax revenue to support essential county services. Achieving a structurally-balanced budget means we do not rely on an estimated fund balance carryforward from 2425. The 2526 requested budget exceeds projected revenues by $6.75 million. That's not scary. I know it seems scary. It's not scary. Having the, statewide, this is a normal part of the process, to have department requests exceed estimated revenues, except for probably Marin County or San Bernardino, they probably have enough revenues. So, yeah. So here's a list of ideas on how to close the budget gap. We can continue the soft hiring freeze, which could reduce services or lead to overtime costs, adjusting our vacancy assumptions to reflect actual attrition. We can limit vehicle replacements to those with high maintenance costs. We can consider using existing fund balances for capital needs that are currently supported by general fund revenue. We can reassess homeless services to either reduce costs or require more city support. In the Walton annexation area, we can review service levels to better match the limited tax revenue. The county is losing $1.3 million annually, providing law enforcement to the City of Yuba City. We can use rollover fund balances as a short-term solution. However, this would postpone achieving the structurally-balanced budget. Now I'll turn it over to Jamie for her review.
Thank you. Before you do that, can you just go give a quick review of the item where you mentioned review service level obligations for Walton? We have two new Supervisors here may not be familiar with the Walton issue, and maybe give them a little bit more background on that.
Yeah, I can give a little bit of background. Do you want to take it, Leon? I think you might know better. I want to give a really great answer. I know a little. She can do better.
Well, you did great anyway. Thank you.
Nicely done, Laura. So under the tax exchange agreement from, I believe it's 2000, so about 25 years ago, we kept the responsibility for patrol in what is called BEAT 6 or BEAT 7, depending on whether you're talking to the county folks or to the City of Yuba City staff. The Sheriff's Office has currently calculated the cost of providing those patrol services in that area at about $1.3 million. But the tax exchange that followed that currently provides us with about $500,000 of that cost. So we're actually about $800,000 to $1 million a year, upside down in that. In addition, the tax exchange that comes from the City of Yuba City to pay for those is a year in arrears. So we just, this last week, received the check for fiscal year 202324. And so we are subsidizing that with county dollars, and it is one place that the Board may want us to look at as a way to fill that gap. On the other hand, you know, the tax exchange agreement is extraordinarily complicated, and so I think it would take extensive legal research to make sure that we're not doing something that's in conflict with us, that could end up in a bad relationship with the city, or in litigation with the city on that. So the Sheriff may have more information that he wants to add to that as well.
You have further information, Chair? Okay.
Yeah, so I will just say that, you know, obviously, it's been a challenge and something that we've been looking at for a long period of time. The numbers Leon gave are correct. That is how much it is costing the county to provide services in the incorporated area of Yuba City. In addition to that, what the exchange does not include is dispatching services. It basically accounts for five deputies, which back in 2000, when they hammered out that agreement, sounded like a really good deal, but it didn't take into account growth, all the traffic issues that we have down in that area, specifically around the middle school. It doesn't provide for a traffic unit. It doesn't provide for dispatching services, which that particular area is our second highest call volume, only second to Live Oak. And so there's just a lot of challenges. Now, I know that had the tax measure passed, it was the city's intent to develop a plan with the county to eventually take that over, but obviously, that kind of fell through. And so with the change in city manager, we haven't really got back to the table to hammer out what that might look like, and what they would be willing to do to help relieve us of some of that. So that's kind of where it's at.
Thank you for the clarification. Certainly something we can need. Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, Brandon, you said second highest call volume compared to Live Oak. Live Oak pays for their sheriff, right?
Yeah, we're contracted with Live Oak, and they pay.
And are we contracted with Yuba City for the second-largest call center?
It's a master tax exchange, so it is a legal agreement. It's not necessarily a
Do you know what the number is?
The number for?
The number, well, what's the number for Live Oak versus Happy Park area?
In terms of total call volume?
Yeah.
I could get that for you.
No, no, just what's the number as far as?
It's roughly around 22% to 25% of our call volume.
No, no, what's the number on dollars?
On dollars? It would be essentially two dispatcher positions, so it'd be the difference in that. Yeah, 1.3, it would be 1.8 million roughly is what we figured.
1.8?
Yeah.
Okay.
And we get about a little over, you know, $500,000 in tax revenue from that area. So we're severely upside down in that agreement.
So we need to have a sit-down like you had in Live Oak?
Yeah, I think it's a little more complex than that, just because it's a master tax agreement, not a contract.
I understand, a contract. I understand. Thank you.
Thank you, Brandon. We're ready for the next item. Hi, Jamie.
Hi. So the next several slides outlines requests from departments for capital projects, building projects, capital assets, vehicles, information technology and staff positions. These capital and building projects have a physical impact on the general fund. The access control system replacement is a countywide project with a total estimated cost of $446,000. It will likely take a few phases to complete. The current access control system, which verifies employee badges access at office entrances, is not only outdated but no longer supported. The clerk recorder's office is in an aging facility requiring several updates. The total project cost is $445,500, with approximately half to be funded by the Recorder's Special Revenue Funds. These projects, you've seen before, because they've been requested repeatedly over the years, but completion has been delayed due to challenges in the availability of temporary relocation options and labor resource limitations. Facilities also recommends a generator replacement at the Sutter Fire and Emergency Operations Central location at 2340 California Street. A reliable generator is critical for both departments due to the nature of their emergency response roles. The estimated cost for the generator is $200,000. So the total estimated general fund impact for these projects is approximately $1.2 million. The capital and building projects with no general fund impact total approximately $2.2 million, compared to the $1.2 million in projects that do impact the general fund. The behavioral health facility at 1965 Live Oak Boulevard requires several updates totaling $227,082. These improvements will be funded through federal, state, and realignment sources. The shade structure for homelessness, for homeless services Better Way is estimated at $10,000 and will be fully funded by a public health grant. The Community Corrections Partnership has approved the use of realignment funds for the main jail Gralgate's project, estimated at $185,000. So these non-vehicle capital asset purchase requests total $190,800, with only approximately $31,000 funded by the general fund. One of the two general fund items is the replacement of K-9 ICO, who has retired. The new K-9 will support deputies in rural areas and assist with criminal apprehensions. The second item is the replacement of two cubicles for the farm advisor. The vehicle requests with general fund impact include five sheriff patrol vehicles totaling $615,000. Cost estimates for these vehicles include all necessary patrol equipment. I do want to note that due to the high annual mileage on Sheriff's Office vehicles, the department submits vehicle replacement requests each year, and this is to minimize the maintenance costs and avoid significant budget impacts.
Through to the Chair.
Yeah, go ahead, Supervisor.
Ken Surah, hey, where are our numbers at? Remember, we were talking, over the last few months, we've had meetings with the leasing company over the difference in the savings of purchasing versus leasing. Are we getting pretty close?
Correct, yeah. We should be pretty close. We had a meeting, I believe it was last week, time kind of blends together, with the leasing company and the Sheriff's Office, CAO's office, and we received a presentation from the company, and they're supposed to get back to us with some solid numbers, comparisons of like five- and 10-year costs versus buying. So we should be pretty close.
Thank you.
The vehicle requests with no general fund impact total approximately $1.7 million. Of this amount, over $1.2 million is funded by road fund dollars, providing a substantial relief to the general fund. Two notable examples on here include the replacement of a non-California air resource board, also known as CARB-compliant dump truck, at a cost of $242,000, and a sewer cleaner truck at $718,000. Information technology requests with general fund impact total approximately $1.7 million, with nearly one-third of the cost attributed to a three-year countywide Microsoft licensing agreement. However, about half of the cost will be covered by federal and state funds for the applicable departments. The next highest cost is $348,879, and it's for year two of the Sherpa budget software implementation. IT requests with no impact to the general fund total $287,743. A significant portion of this A significant portion of this amount, which is $117,605, is for replacing the end-of-life environmental health application for the Certified Unified Program Agency, also known as COOPA, funded through state grants and federal, I'm sorry, state grants and service charge revenues. Health and Human Services Employment Eligibility Branch will also be replacing 40 desktops and, along with two monitors each, with the $57,633 cost covered by federal, state, and realignment funds. There are seven general fund impacted position requests consisting of four additions and three deletions, resulting in a net increase of one position. The overall net general fund cost associated with these changes is $28673. We have a Part One and Part Two slide. I'll show Part One first. There are 26 non-general fund impacted position requests, which includes 14.5 additions and 11.5 deletions, resulting in a net increase of three positions. The remaining three positions, I want to note, for child support services are currently budgeted in Sutter County through the end of calendar year 2025 and will transfer to Yolo County at the beginning of next year as part of the child support regionalization effort. The overall cost associated with these position changes is $393,620. The total net increase in positions combining both general fund impacted and non-general fund impacted requests is four. It's evident that departments have been very thoughtful in their requests, as you can see here, because they're prioritizing critical needs. Many have proposed reallocating positions to a more sustainable funding source, with some even deleting existing positions to support their new requests. So, there are several ongoing concerns that continue to impact county operations and budget priorities. Due to limited revenue generating options amid rising costs, Sutter County struggles to remain competitive with surrounding counties in recruiting and retaining quality employees. Public safety costs continue to rise, driven by increasing jail medical expenses, Proposition 36 impacts, and state hospital costs for incompetent to stand trial populations. New state mandates in areas like homelessness and behavioral health services, combined with state encroachment on local funding and cuts to federal support, are placing increased strain on county resources. Finally, the operational cost of County Service Area F consistently exceed the flat revenue it generates, creating a critical structural funding challenge. Sutter County continues to face significant workforce challenges, we know that, including multiple failed recruitments or pools of candidates who are significantly underqualified for critical positions. In response, departments have been created. They often relied on one-off or short-term solutions to fill gaps, an approach that is not sustainable and actually can lead to inconsistent service delivery. The departure of experienced staff to other jurisdictions results in a substantial loss of institutional knowledge, which impacts both operational efficiency and stability. Extended vacancies in revenue generating position not only strain service capacity, but also result in lost revenue, further anticipating budgetary pressures. Meanwhile, while requiring staff such as safety positions to work excessive hours to keep operations running, that may lead to burnout and essentially an increased risk of turnover. While supporting the core county functions, particularly in public safety, is essential, these are not the only mandated responsibility the county must meet. Proposition 172 funds, which supports public safety, are projected to decline in fiscal year 2025-26. These funds cover only 28.5% of the net cost of public safety services, leaving a substantial burn on the county's general fund. Many of these services are delivered countywide, regardless of city or jurisdictional boundaries, placing additional pressure on county resources without proportionate revenue. To remain competitive in recruitment and retention, Sutter County has increased salaries and benefits in recent years where they can. While necessary, these adjustments have significantly increased general fund obligations. Proposition 36, passed by the voters, has imposed new legal and operational requirements without providing any state funding or support to their implementation. Adding to the challenge, the state has placed limits and penalties related to IST cases. This has had a direct impact on local jail, which are increasingly required to hold individuals with serious mental illness or disabilities related to cognitive development. And of course, this is all without sufficient behavioral health resources or facilities. For fiscal year 2025-20, 2024-25, so which is this current fiscal year, the penalty Sutter County will be facing is $229,500. In this figure, we can expect to rise in future years further restraining the limited public and mental health resources.
The homeless services budget accounts for all homeless-related services, including operations of the Better Way Emergency Homeless Shelter, the Oak Haven Project within the City of Live Oak, Harmony Village, and legal camping on Second Street. And even though there are multiple grants to help fund the increasingly complex homeless operation, there is still a $5.2 million net general fund cost over the last five years, with another $1.1 million general fund request for 25-26. Although behavioral health isn't currently a general fund obligation, it's becoming an increasing fiscal concern. SB 43 expanded the definition of conservatorship to include those with substance use disorders, but attached no funding for the additional services. At the same time, the state is redirecting Mental Health Services Act dollars, which limits local flexibility. And now, over two-thirds of the behavioral health realignment is spent on hospitalizations and inpatient patches, which is the gap between services and the state and federal, the costs that state and federal funds actually cover. To temporarily address these concerns, HHS is requesting to exercise its right to transfer $1.5 million from social services realignment. This approach isn't sustainable in the long term, and we may eventually face general fund exposure. We continue to see a troubling pattern of state encroachment on local services. The state faces persistent budget deficits, and history shows a consistent trend of shifting responsibilities to counties without sufficient or even sometimes any funding. Counties have little to say in these decisions, yet we're left to absorb the consequences without adequate support. If federal funding is also reduced, the compounding effect could significantly strain county resources. Some grants supporting public health infrastructure have been cut. Federal healthcare waivers are also at risk, threatening to disrupt essential services across health, human services, and public safety. Losing these critical funds would significantly strain our local systems. We're closely monitoring the risk of federal cuts, but much remains uncertain. Only known cuts are included in the 25-26 department requests, and Leanne will take us through the final portion of the presentation.
Thank you, Laura. So, we get down to one of our most perplexing problems, which is how to continue to operate County Service Area F. So, this is a map of the county fire service in Sutter County. The yellow area is County Service Area F. The pink area is Uba City Fire Department's responsibility. The blue is Meridian Fire District. The green area is Sutter Basin Fire District, or Robbins Fire District, as it's sometimes referred to. And then, CSA's C and D, East Nicholas and Pleasant Grove, are down in the south part of the county. So, just to give you a little bit of background, CSAF was formed in 1996 to consolidate CSA's A and B, and it was funded initially through benefit assessments. CSAF was always intended to be self-supporting and not place a burden on the general fund, and I've cut the language out of the LAFCO document that actually says the level and range of those services are restricted only by the service area's ability to finance them. So, in 1996, Prop 218 was passed that made doing benefit assessments far more complicated. And so, in 1997, the voters in the County Service Area F passed a measure to provide a stable, property-based assessment to support the CSAF operations. They wanted to have full-time career firefighters in there, and so they voted to pay for it. The funding for the special tax assessment has not grown substantially over the past 30 years, and I have a graph that I'll show you that really well illustrates that. And it absolutely no longer supports the level of services being provided. The Measure A in 2022 would have provided sufficient revenue to the county that we may have been able to offset the growing cost in CSAF, but because that wasn't passed, we don't have that flexibility. A citizen-driven measure in 2023 did not gather enough citizens' signatures from CSAF area to even qualify for the ballot. So, CSAF has relied on one-time funding designated by the Board of Supervisors to sustain operations, but it no longer has the resources, nor does Sutter County, sorry, have the resources to continue ongoing operations at the level they're currently being provided. So, this is a look at what the Board has provided over the past five years to CSAF. It totals $4.6 million. Most of these are one-time COVID-related dollars, either the CARES Act or ARPA. And you can see that that amount grows as we get further in, or into the nearer term, with $1.7 million being spent, of ARPA money being spent on CSAF in this current fiscal year. So, this is what CSAF would look like in their financial status if you remove the COVID dollars. So, you can see in where it says net surplus or deficit. In most years, we've had a surplus, but when you remove the COVID dollars, in all but one years, we're running at a significant deficit. And so, this is when I say that the level of services is not sustainable. This is what it looks like on paper.
Leanne, would you mind going back to that last slide?
Sure.
Not that one.
This one?
One before.
Right there.
So, am I looking at that 1.7 as being 2024? What was, what was the reason for the giant increase?
The increase is basically related to retaining firefighters that were hired under the SAFER grant, and rather than having the federal SAFER grant funds that come through FEMA, which we did not qualify in the last two rounds of funding, we, the county backfilled those with ARPA dollars.
Okay, I got it.
Okay, and also, also important to note is that the general fund is contributing through Fire Services Administration, which has totaled about $1.5 million over the last few years. So, that's not an insignificant amount as well. So, when you add those two together, you're really talking about $6 million expense ongoing. So then, this is the graph I was talking about. So, you can see the growth in salaries and benefits as the blue line. Allocated property tax has stayed, for the most part, for the first 10 or 20 years, it was pretty stable. But then you see that gap starting to widen, and it's widening significantly in the budget year. The Live Oak contract has grown. We have a large number of our firefighters that work directly for Live Oak. So, that's kept pace pretty well, and I think the most recent contract that was negotiated is a very fair contract in terms of the county's position. But the red line is the fire tax, and you can see the flaw in that. It had no escalator. There's no ability for that to increase. We've never had the build-out, I think, that was originally intended in CSAF, so that has stayed absolutely flat-lined, which is why I put it in red, so you can see that it's a flat line. So, from a legal standpoint, and certainly our county council, Bill Vanaset, can expand on this a little bit, the county cannot continue to use general fund to support CSAF. The CSAF is defined as a special district whose affairs and business is overseen by the Board of Supervisors, but it is not part of the county. The general fund can loan dollars to the CSA, but the loan has to be repaid within the same fiscal year. There's a provision under the law that allows the Board to delay that repayment for up to three years, but it also says that you can't forgive that loan unless you can prove economic or fiscal hardship to the property owners in the district, which would be very easily challenged and very, very difficult to support. So, this is kind of where we are, and we're really to a point where difficult decisions have to be made, and they have to be made quickly. So, this is CSAF's budget gap for, or budget for fiscal year 25-26. We estimate that because we've had an influx of additional dollars coming in this year, that the district will actually finish the year with a surplus of about $305,000. And if we carry that over to their existing fund balance, that gives us about $901,000 worth of flexibility that can be appropriated. But their budget request is $1.45 million. So, we have a gap already of $550,000 just in the current, in the budget year. So, this is where we really have to be contemplative about what you want to do in the near term, because I really am very loath to ever recommend that you spend all of the reserves in a single year. But there are some things that we can recommend as ways to control the costs in that budget. The first one, and just to be clear, the CO's office is not recommending this option, but it is an option for your Board to consider, is to operate the fire stations with single-person staffing. We don't believe, in fact, in our history, we ended up with a substantial increase in the workers' comp cost, which is basically just an expense that's gone. You're not really seeing any fruitful return on that investment. So, we really don't want to make that recommendation. Another option would be to intermittently close the Sutter and Oswald Tudor Fire Stations on a rotating basis. So, one station would always be fully staffed at two people per shift, but then the other station would be staffed by volunteers, and if there are no volunteers available, it would be shuttered for that day. You have the option of permanently closing a fire station. And the Sutter Fire Station has the fewest calls for service, and the coverage would have to be managed between the other stations. Of course, that would mean delays in response times. You could contribute Prop 172 funds to CSAF. We don't recommend doing that for a couple of reasons. First of all, it would be unfair to distribute Prop 172 funds simply to CSAF and not to the other fire districts in the area. And as a reminder, Prop 172 funds came as a result of the loss of property tax revenues that went to the schools under the ERAF back in 2000, it might have been 1998. Anyway, so, it's important to know that the loss to the county was substantial. And remember, it only pays less than a third of the cost for our county public safety, the general, county general fund public safety services, with the general fund making up the difference. So, if you were to move Prop 172 dollars to CSAF or any of the CSAs or any of the fire districts, it means that you're going to create a larger general fund hole. With the general fund spread as thin as it is right now, we just can't make that recommendation. One thing that the Board could do is provide a consultant to support a group to rent a citizens' property-based revenue measure. We could provide support, although the county would not be promoting the tax measure itself. It would be grassroots. It would have to come from the citizens inside there. And basically, it means that they would be voting to tax themselves to get the level of services that they're requiring. And then finally, and this is a short-term answer, the Sutter Point developers have offered to fund six existing limited-term firefighter positions for one. offered to fund six existing limited-term firefighter positions for one year. The benefit to Sutter Point is they would end up with trained firefighters, but they would be kept in the stations that we have here. So that would solve the budget problem for fiscal year 2526, but it kicks the can down the road. So, you know, in the hopes that we could do something where there could be a citizen measure passed, and then that would be, then the CSAF would be funded in the long term, and the short-term solution would work in the interim. With that, I know that Chief Daly is here and can answer any questions, or I'd be happy to answer any follow-up questions.
Okay, board, do you have questions? Go ahead, Supervisor Ziegemeyer.
Through the chair. No, I want to say, great job by staff. I truly believe we have the best staff ever. I mean, you guys are the greatest. This is a whole team effort right here. I mean, a lot of this stuff, you look at some of the stuff that's been accumulated here and done over the past year and a half, this is a big deal. This is from HR to behavioral health. I mean, from DA to sheriff, the fire, everyone, from ag commissioner, Steve Smith's office. This is huge. And because I'm so glad, Leanne, you decided to come back and help us out out of retirement. I love having you around. But I believe that there's a lot of great things out there. You know, we're going to touch base, first of all, with the People's Initiative. I've had numerous people in the community come up and ask me about that. And the reason why they say, Mike, if we knew that we helped write something that was just for fire alone, we knew where it was going, that's something we'd like to get behind. And I'm like, will you? They said, we're here to help. You know, we'll show you the budget, we'll show you everything, we'll show you where all the money's gone. We got nothing to hide. Everything's transparent. It's all online. You could see where everything, you could see where we've cut, where, and there's some places we've cut where we didn't want to cut. I mean, none of us wanted to cut library hours or museum hours. That was a tough one. That was really, really tough. We all love our library, we love our museum and so forth, but you gotta keep bad guys off the streets, and you gotta keep people safe in the community. So with that being said, it goes on to the other things that we're working on. You know, just the Planning Commission earlier this month, they just approved a commercial industry, and commercial industrial property zoning in my district. Another zoning is going to go before the commission in June. This is huge. This is a potential for eight, nine, 10 retail locations. That means buildings coming in, full retail, paying property taxes, paying sales tax, and all that goes to help out. That's what we need. That's why when, you know, we, Sutter Point, we always talked about, hey, we can't wait till Sutter Point comes in because of the, you look over at the highway, Amazon and everything else. I just drove down 99 to Vegas last week for volleyball, and I look at that Auto Zone that Supervisor Baines and Supervisor Flores worked really hard on to track in that. We were number one on the list. We didn't get it because we were not ready. We didn't have, we weren't shovel-ready. And I asked one of those guys in the meeting, I said, what do you mean? He's like, Mike, they expect pipes, sewer. But it is doable in rural locations to have businesses still utilizing Septic and Leachfield. So either way, that's what we're working on. We touched earlier with Ken Sorop there on the leasing of vehicles. This has a potential to save us anywhere from 250 to $1 million a year if it works out. Those are the numbers so far we've been looking at. That's a savings. And we talk about culverts. You know, Neil Hay and myself, we've been having a series of meetings with some new covert repair science that's been, I think it was developed in Denmark, I believe. So this company came out, we met with them last month, we looked at some culverts. There's cost savings everywhere. I want to give a shout-out to my fellow supervisor, Jeff Stevens, who spent the morning with Steve Smith in Sacramento, actually advocating for AB975 that you helped, 975 that you helped put together with our seminarman, James Gallagher. For those who, you don't know what that is, that's for covert repairs bypassing CEQA. And I believe that went through the committee.
Supervisor Ziegemeyer, can we back up just a bit? So I was just entertaining questions regarding Leanne's presentation on the fire side. And then we can do final comments, but...
What I'm getting at is, is this is all loosely related, because every buck saved helps out, you know? And I believe in, if we could save 5,000 here, 10,000 here, $100,000 here, we're going to figure this fire thing out, because we want our firefighters safe, we want our communities safe, and we want a mandate. We don't want one person in the firehouse. I mean, if we had to, if we had, if we got there, that's one thing, but we're going to do everything we can to make sure that we have two guys in the firehouse. But I want to thank our interim chief and Pete. Thank you, guys, for all your support and your help.
Chief Daly, did you have any comments on fire? Do you want to chime in on the possibility of doing a measure, you know, run by citizens, you leading it up versus, you know, one run by the county? There was also a discussion at one point, it's not on this presentation, but a possibility of fee for service for a little while. You know, so I just want, we kind of wanted to just get your take on it.
Sure. So I'll start off with this. I turned 60 this year. I'm like, okay, what's the big deal about that? Well, I started when I was 20 here. So I started when I was 20 with Uba City, so I've been here for 40 years. So I've had interaction with four fire chiefs from Sutter County. Chief Kraus, Chief Anheavenhoven, Chief Dyer, or, I'm drawing a blank now. Jaeger, thank you. Chief Jaeger and Chief Salowitz. And the one thing I heard consistently through all those years I worked with them was they were struggling with this very situation. So it's not a new thing. So when Steve and I met and we talked about things, one of the commitments I made is, we need to, we've been putting a Band-Aid effect, a Band-Aid on this for a long time. We need to fix the problem, and it's going to require change. There's four components that we're working on right now. One is we're working with Sutter Point. Like, I have another negotiation with them tomorrow to talk about the needs down at Sutter Point and emphasizing that those costs have to be covered down there without cost to the county to provide fire services down there, because that's a big pull for us down there to put a fire station down there and staffing. That's one. The second thing is, we need to aggressively go after a fire tax. We really do. The community needs to decide what level of fire service they want in their community. And I, there's a lot of, I believe the firefighters, the association support that. They want to move forward with that. They're very eager to do a citizens' initiative, and they want to address that as quickly as they can. I think that's going to be a critical point for us. I think we have a better chance of being successful than maybe last measures, just because, as you mentioned earlier, when people know that the funding is going directly to the fire service, and the need's been identified, that's where it's going, nowhere else, not administration, not the fire chiefs or anything like that, or other types of needs, it's going directly to fire service needs, people are more inclined to participate in helping out with that. The fire tax is pretty low in CSAF right now, as you know, as from what Leanne showed you. The third thing needs to happen, too, I think, eventually, and I'd like to achieve here before I leave, because I'm retired in Newton as well, is I'd like to see, I think, as we talk about saving money, I think consolidation within the fire services within the county. I think for a long time, I felt that CND are doing a great job, but they struggle, and we should have one fire department in the county. I know there's two other independent districts, but they're having challenges as well, and I haven't talked to them in depth yet, but I think that there's a need there. And finally, we need to have a strategic plan for the county, county-wide for fire services for now and in the future, and we can put that together. So getting back to your original question, yes, I think a fire tax is what's needed. We can do other Band-Aid-type things to help us. We put in for the AFG grant for 1.6 million dollars this year for breathing apparatus. Haven't heard anything, because the federal government's kind of got a hold on stuff. We're going to put in for the SAFER grant, but that hasn't even come out yet, because everything's on hold. So those are nice-to-have things, that gives us extra money, but we can't be relying on those. We have to be self-reliant on ourselves. And I think, starting with working with Sutter Point and also working with some type of fire tax and CSAF, and if that's successful, maybe expanding that into other districts as we consolidate with other districts like CND, I think that makes some sense in the overall run. So I don't know if that answers your question or not.
Thank you, chief. Just a question on the fire tax clarification. So what would be the soonest we'd be able to do a tax like that? Would be this tax, this election year, or are we talking another election year?
We talked as early as maybe when Steve and I talked a little bit, maybe as early as this fall, right? We were kind of making that assumption around fall time, maybe, going out for...
Yeah, I have received information from a consultant who ran similar property tax measures with SABUCA, and they think realistically next year. And even then, when it's implemented, then for that following year is when the property tax, if it's a property-related measure, that's when that is. So you're looking a year out from whenever it's passed to when you receive the revenue.
When you receive the actual revenue, is what you're saying. But you're so, potentially could pass this fall, though.
Highly doubtful.
Okay, chief, so that was your understanding?
Well, it's going to be a major shift, so we're looking more at after the first year, then?
Okay.
This is recent information.
Understood. Okay, all right. Thank you for the clarification. I look forward to hearing more about that. Definitely, we could support something like along those lines. And I like, I like that you narrowed it down to four objectives. It makes it clear for us, things to look at. And the idea of a fee for service in the middle that's just not popular, just not, that won't pass, or, I mean, what is, I know other cities do it.
Other cities do, but it's dwindling quickly. And I've been in contact with one of the major collectors that collects the fees for that in Northern California. In fact, they do that, they collect for SAC Metro and West SAC and some other areas. And they're not even taking on new departments as far as collecting fees, especially for medical aids, because it just hasn't been, it hasn't panned out for them financially. So I looked at it heavily when I was with the city in 2016, '17, and we decided to do cost recovery for certain things, like vehicle accidents, hazardous material spills, things like that. But we shied away from the, from the medical aids and recouping costs for that, because the rate return was so low. And I've met with Alex Bumpus recently, who owns By County. He's having the same kind of challenges. And then I also talked to the EMS billing agency, as I mentioned, and they said, hey, their return is so low right now for medical aids, it's not even, it's not cost-effective for them to even take on any other agencies. Sacramento is one of the last big ones that, that...
Still does it, yeah.
Still does it with them.
Okay. I have a few questions.
Yes.
Can I add one thing to this? Because I think it's an option for the board, that if a tax measure was passed, there is a gap between when it's passed and when you actually collect the money. So the CAO's office can never make a recommendation to you to loan money to what is effectively certainly fiscally-challenged entity without the ability to have that money paid back. But within the general fund, we do have a million-dollar public safety kind of cushion that we could, that the board could authorize to be used as bridge money, knowing that the board would be paid back, the county would be paid back, and then you could restore that. But that is an option that you could exercise.
Thank you.
And just one more thing, real quick, on the, to follow up on the cost recovery. We do do cost recovery in Sutter County. I think we've had about $80,000 in the last couple of years that we've recouped for different types of, mostly vehicle accidents.
Vehicle accidents, okay.
So...
Clarification, good.
Thank you. So my question is, I understand that the cost, the problem arises July 1st with the new budget and everything, and I heard something about kicking the can down the road with Sutter Point and everything else. If we're going to go forward with a tax measure for raising money, can we keep the services in place by kicking the can down the road or doing whatever we have to do till we at least get through that process, whether it goes or not goes, but at least we don't have to make the cuts till we know the answer?
That would be correct.
We could kick the...
Yes. So, and we actually have enough, how can I phrase this? We have, if Sutter Point steps in and they help us, because they're going to need staffing down there eventually anyway, and this kind of, it's kind of a, it's mutually beneficial, because it saves them money from me having to go out and recruit and train people for a year. I already have six people that can fill that role, so that helps them as well as helping us, so it's mutually beneficial. Then that helps us, and with our leftover balance funds that we have, we'll be okay for a year. But we'll need to have some type of fire tax in place, because all we're doing is putting a Band-Aid on it.
Right, eventually, we'll have to...
Eventually, we got to fix it. That's why we need to be aggressive on the tax.
But that will buy us some time.
Yeah. But if the people choose not to, not to fund the fire tax, there'll be, there'll be some challenges next year.
I got that.
Some decisions made.
Through the chair. No, I go back to like the People's Initiative and what the people, like I said, what my constituents are asking. And the reason why, they want to be in the driver's seat, so they know where everything is going. And they want to work with you two fellows and with staff to help with facilitating something like that.
Absolutely.
Is there anything else you wanted to add?
Unless there's any questions.
Okay, thank you for those points. Any questions from the board? Okay. And did you guys want to finish the final slide of the presentation?
Yes, we do.
Dinner time.
So the next step is, the budget book will be published. Well, first, we'll balance the budget. We will never bring a budget to you that is not balanced. Then we will send the budget book to be published, and it will be released to the public on June 6th of 2025. The CAO recommended budget will be presented again to your board on June 10th. We will bring the tentative recommended budget back to you at a normal budget meeting, June 24th, so that you can approve the tentative approval, so we can continue county operations July 1 until budget is adopted. Budget hearings are August 19th. Budget adoption sometime in September, must be before October 2nd. And with that, the budget study session is concluded.
Right, well, I first want to just say thank you to all, everybody here, because I know you're involved in the, in putting the budget together, and it takes a lot of work, a lot of effort. We made a lot of sacrifices and changes. And then I also want to really thank you, the staff, for presenting to us in a way that we understand and kept us awake. It's almost 8 o'clock, and, you know, that's, that's pretty amazing. So just to, I know we've got a long road ahead of us, but I feel confident we can do it with the people we have here, so.
Yeah, the staff has been amazing. They had not only to do budget, which is difficult, they had to do it on a shortened timeline, because we had the new Sherpa budget software.
Oh, right.
And they were just outstanding. They were wonderful to work with, just team players. They showed up, ready to work, what can I do to help? You just have the best staff here at the county, so...
Awesome. Let's give them a round of applause, guys.
Yeah, truly.
Yeah, thank you, guys. And we look forward to celebrating with you at the picnic, actually, right? It's coming up, so, you know, it's going to be a lot of fun, and we'll celebrate a little bit of this at the picnic. But like I said, we have a long road ahead of us, and, but we have a great staff to be able to handle it. So everybody have a great night. Thank you very much. Meeting adjourned.